Welcome, everybody. We'll call the order of Grand Forks City Council Meeting Monday, June 20th. Give a roll call, please, Maureen.
Weigel?
Here.
Dockler?
Here.
Webber?
Here.
Mock?
Here.
Cavami? Mr. Cavami? Sandy?
Here.
And Veen?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item 1.3, Mayor's announcements. Got a few announcements today. Pretty busy last couple of weeks. Last week, the CVIC Rise and Shine Breakfast. It's kind of an annual event, fundraiser. Got to go over to that. Very exciting. Really happy to support that, both personally and professionally, that program. So if you get a chance and you haven't heard about CVIC, go out there, take a look, and maybe give them some of your money. We had serious aircraft executives who were in town, George Lutton and Bill King, who's been here a number of times. Pretty exciting. They're looking to expand. Right now, they're two years out. If you ordered a single-engine aircraft right now, it'd take two years. If you ordered a jet, it'd take five. They're looking to expand, and they're really interested in Grand Forks and adding workforce here. So another exciting growth opportunity for Grand Forks. We're at the MNOC, they call it out at Grand Sky, and I got it. It's the Mission Network Operations Center for the Vantas system in the Northern Plains test site. So Ribbon Cutting was out there. The governor was there and had some nice words, not only about Grand Sky, but the direction of Grand Forks. It was great to see everybody out on Saturday at the Air Force Base. It didn't quite go as planned. Unfortunately, the weather played a pretty tough role. We got to see, we did get to see shockwaves. So it was a semi-truck attached to some jet engines. That was about the only thing, other than getting to see all the equipment on the ground. But nice to see the community out and enjoying the day regardless of the weather. We do have a few retirements. Becky Alt is going to be moving on to her retired life. Really enjoyed working with her the time that I was here. I'm sure any of our staff and Fire, PD, you know, Altrue, the Sheriff's Department, anybody that had got to work with Becky Alt over the years, really enjoyed everything that she did. Municipal Judge Boucher chose not to run. It looks like with how close the election was, he might have to work just a little longer than we expected. So he might, we might not be having a new judge sworn in next Tuesday. But just if you get a chance, let Judge Boucher know you appreciated everything he did. Along with that, Terry Newman, the clerk of the municipal court, is also moving on. They might be a little bit connected, I'm guessing, after Judge Boucher's long career. Some exciting news. Riverside Pool is going to be opening. It would have been nice to have that the last few days, but it'll be open in June 23rd. Painting and caulking is done out there. Obviously, it was a tough year with flooding and a lot of other aspects. So that's up and running. Next week, the Space Development Agency is going to be in town. They're setting up shop at the Grand Forks Air Force Base. So pretty exciting. They're going to do the Ribbon Cutting. We should have our entire congressional delegation there and a lot of people buzzing around next week. We've got new council members, so we will have the meeting and the swearing-in, the organizational meeting, next Tuesday. On that note, we've got, it won't be your last meeting. You'll have, we'll have a little bit more of a ceremony that day, but just wanted to thank Vice President Mock and Councilwoman Dockler for getting to work with you the last two years. So thank you for that. We've got a thank you to Captain Jeffrey Powell and his staff at the 319th OG Commander's Action Group. They took part in a cleanup project with the North Dakota Department of Transportation. They spent quite a bit of time out on a Friday, June 10th, there at 43rd and Gateway. They took out, let's see what the total was. They took out four roll-off containers, tree branches, and other vegetation, and 12 bags of garbage. They cleaned up a site there. It's a North Dakota Department of Transportation property, but kind of an entrance to our town. So nice to see that cleaned up. Finally, some, you know, really unfortunate news to our Public Health Director Debbie Swanson, longtime former city attorney Howard Swanson. You know, there's really nothing you can say when you unexpectedly lose a child. I mean, that's about the worst nightmare you could possibly have. So anybody, thoughts and prayers towards Howard and Debbie as they're going through a difficult time, and just keep them in your thoughts. So that's all I got for Mayor's announcements today. Moving on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1, Presentations to the Finance Department for the Certificate of Achievement and Financial Reporting for Year Ended 12/31/2020 and the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the 22 Budget.
Great work by the finance team. Let's see if I got this right. One of them is the 15th consecutive year, and the other one's the 35th consecutive year. So Maureen, that was your first year here, right?
Yes.
Great work, as always. We appreciate everything the finance team does, and year after year after year. So thank you.
Thank you. And we do have some people in the audience here from the Finance Department. I'm wondering if I can have you guys come up. Do you mind if I have them?
No, please.
Come up for a moment and say a few words?
Want some up there, Maureen?
What's that?
Up there.
You know what? I'm going to stay here if you stay there. So who we have here tonight for the, it's called the ACFOR, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It used to be called the CAFER. Candy's played lead in this role and is counted on to lead that effort, and I'm really grateful for that. And she does a great job. And like you said, it's the 35th year in a row that we received that award. And Mike really leads the budget document and putting that together for the presentation award. And 15th year, consecutive year in a row, so we're proud of that as well. A lot of work goes into these documents. Sherry up here, as well, is integral. And Josh, next to Mike there, they're all integral into both these processes, and we're very thankful for that. But what I wanted to do other than to say thank you and introduce these wonderful employees to you is I'm going to turn it over to Mike and Josh here. They're going to show you just a little snippet of how we went digital with that budget document and show you how to navigate a little bit to the public. And I think it's pretty user-friendly, but I'm going to let them take it from here just for a couple minutes, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Maureen. Mayor Bochinski and President Sandy and members of council. I was actually a little nervous to submit the budget document this year. And you also may have noticed that you have not received a physical 2022 budget as of yet. And the reason for both of those is that this was the first year that we had converted from a paper-based document to a website document, for external budget document. The GFOA, the organization that gives out the award, updated the criteria. They wanted it to be a little more 21st century, more digital, interactive, and just more accessible to the public. So we had partnered with a company called ClearGov, who developed a product that helped governments get the GFOA budget award based on the new criteria and to ultimately have your external budget document be a website. So this is the first year that we have submitted and converted the budget document to be a website. And right now, I'm going to turn it over to Josh. He's one of our accountants, and he was tasked with doing most of the heavy lifting during the conversion. And he was going to show you around how to get there from our city website and show you the product. So with that, I'll turn it over to Josh.
Can I see it there?
Yeah, if we can, if we can share the screen here on the front. There you go.
All right. So I get the great opportunity to show you guys how to access the budget and what we all did. So I am going to the finance and administrative part of the Grand Forks Gov website and clicking the budget and 2022 budget, and that'll take us to ClearGov. And then we have a link right here to click on the 2022 budget document. And then from there, if you know exactly what you're looking for, we have a table of contents with every single thing linked, and it all is exactly the same from what you've seen from previous years, as far as all department breakouts, all the CIP things, supplemental information. We also have the navigation tabs up here where everything is also broken out, and you can click on any of these. It's, looks exactly the same like what you would have had in a physical copy of the previous year. One nice thing about ClearGov is if we go over to a fun summary, we can see that there's a lot of new things. They create graphs and charts for us, just having the data in there, and a lot of nice pie charts as far as like revenue breakouts, expense breakouts, et cetera. And the more years that we'll have in here, the more historical data we'll have. So these charts can get, have even more historicals attached to them, and it'll just keep building off itself the more we use this. It also has, you know, department breakouts as well. So we can click on the finance one, for instance, and it has all their mission statement, objectives, performance measures, and staffing charts down here. So it's all just like what you had in the paper copy, but now digital and a lot more accessible to everyone, including council members and citizens. Moving on, we have the debt section and the capital improvement plan. We have every single capital project listed out on here, as far as all the people in engineering and the utility funds that help us go and get these breakouts. So for instance, the Columbia Road Overpass, anyone can go click on that and see what's planned to be done, the reasoning for it, and what year is going to be done. So a lot of this is good information if any public is looking for it. And then finally, we have supplemental information with the city staffing chart and other things like that. So I'm really happy with this. And as we keep getting better with the software and as the software keeps improving, it's only going to build off itself and get even better, so.
So in the 2023 process here, is this going to be accessible during the draft, or will this only be posted once the budget's finalized? I guess just for council members and anyone that wants to look?
This is after it's finalized. This is after the fact. So once we get all the numbers, we send it into ClearGov, and then they get the numbers in there, and then we start building it from there to get all these other charts and graphs and stuff in there and all the separate department pages, so.
Okay. Thank you. Looks great, too. Thank you.
2.2 is a presentation of 2023 Budget Growth Indicators.
Maureen, just businesslike. She just keeps moving on always. Doesn't want anyone to clap for her, so.
I should also point out, we're proud of our previous intern, and shows all of that program is very good. Josh was our intern, and now he's an accountant, and he's already made improvements for us. So we're very thankful to have him. So thank you.
I should mention quickly, do we did have an air handler that went out, so it's a little toasty in here. It's catching up, but just so you know, it will cool down as the evening goes on.
Now we'll go to the 2.2 Presentation of 2023 Budget Indicators and Salary Plan attached as a presentation, handouts, and the salary plan. And I'm going to go down there to present.
Sounds good. I'll just start. I got a few comments, and I'll start while you're heading down there. We're starting out the salary plan tonight and a kind of a preview of the budget. We also see budget performance from quarter one, and the budget performance has been strong. Things that we can control have been doing really well. As you look at the budget, you look at the salary plan this year, there's really a focus on paying competitive wages to our employees. You know, anytime you lose someone, there's a cost to having to retrain someone and losing that institutional knowledge. And we've got a very hardworking and dedicated staff. So I'm happy that we did the best we could to raise wages this year and create promotional opportunities without raising mills. So the city's been reducing mills year after year, and this year, they're going to be held steady, held flat. You know, you're likely to see some increase in property taxes. There's inflation on home values, but also, you know, a large increase in mills by the school, and also the county's looking at that. So the city's going to continue to do what we can to not only be efficient, but to grow the tax base so that our current taxpayers pay less of that share. And the city's going to also be looking in the future at some possible ways to use current sales tax revenue as a way to lower the costs on citizens and increase some of the amenity offerings in the community. So more to come on that in the future. But Maureen, if your team, your award-winning team would like to take it from here, please do.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. All right. So thank you, Mayor. City council members, as the mayor gave you a little preview, I'm just going to go through, first of all, how things are looking year-to-date this year with a first-quarter budget performance comparison. Then we'll look at some projections that we're looking at, growth indicators, as we look forward to the 23 budget. And at that time, I'm going to turn it over to Tanji, our HR director. That's going to go through the salary plan and benefit update. And then we'll go forward with the timeline and let you know what's to come. And open it up for questions and answers at the end. So you should have a handout along with this that was attached, labeled Handout A. And this will give you a one-page snapshot of the general fund and the key utility funds that just gives you a little look at revenue and expenditures. And that report is going to show you how the numbers are coming in as compared to budget for the first quarter, so through March 31st of 2022. Realistic tax, property tax, is really your most stable source of revenue for your general fund. That is 98% of budget as of the first quarter, which makes sense because that money comes in from the county primarily in March of the year. Looking at sales tax, as we're a quarter through the year, that was at 28% of the budget. So that's tracking well. In fact, the collection that we just received, that we'll get it tomorrow, actually, so I'll be sending those reports out, but we did update this slide for the impact of that. With that, we'll be up 12.67% for sales tax once that is on the books, and 14.26% on a 12-month rolling. What I want to point out with this is sales tax is very volatile. If I were to look at the numbers a month ago, I was going to say we're up 3% on the year. So big monthly swings can happen with those revenues, and, but we were thankful for that collection payment. So that's coming in good. State aid, 27% of budget as of the first quarter. Looking at building permits, I don't want you to be alarmed when you see 16% of budget at the first quarter end. When we, most of the activity starts up in the spring. When we look at it today, that's currently at 52%. And franchise fees, that is tracking very well, ahead of budget actually at 40%. That, of course, is your cable, electric, and gas. And we'll go into that a little more in detail later. Overall, your general fund expenditures are 23% of the budget, as we're 25% of the year. So we're on track for that. What we do want to continue to monitor, of course, is the impacts that we see with fuel prices and utilities. We're a little ahead of budget there, so we'll continue to monitor that. So looking at just a three-year comparison, looking at, okay, how did we fare this first quarter compared to the previous two years? As far as state aid, the column to the left is 2020, then in the middle, 2021, and then finally, to the right, is 2022 first quarter. So when we look at the middle column there on state aid, it was down that first quarter compared to the previous year. That did rebound and ended the year up about 8%. You can see the first quarter this year seems to be more on target with 2020, but it looks even a little bit better. So that's tracking well. I would just like to point out that with state aid, there was a legislative change on that. We used to receive that quarterly. Now that comes in monthly, which really, it helps cash flow a little bit. So that is coming in. And to make budget, I was running some numbers, and we would need an average of $342,000 a month state aid collections to make budget. When I look at the year-to-date average, it's coming in at $376,000. So we're pretty good shape there. And then highway tax, I point that out. We're going to continue to monitor that. This is down significantly, as you can see, for the first quarter of '22. It's down 18%. I think you're seeing the impacts there of the higher gas prices. Maybe people aren't filling up as often. Maybe people are working remotely. We'll continue to watch that. But if you're questioning that, it's not a, it's not going to go up when the price of gas goes up. It's not based on a percent. It's a flat rate by the number of gallons. So it has an inverse relationship with the price of the gas on that funding source.
Maureen, I had a quick question on the state aid. Now, is this 2022, is that still using our pre-2020 census? Because we added some population versus our estimated. So is that still a little bit lagging? We should see a little better?
Correct. We, yeah, I believe that's on the, it's on the estimate, yes, not the latest census figures.
Okay. Thank you.
And then if we turn to the next graphic here, and I apologize, I don't know why this is not coming through. The numbers that should be reflected there in the far-left column for 2020 is just under $11 million, 10.98. 2021 is $11.25 million, and 2022 is $11.69, or $649 million. So about $11.65 million. So what we just wanted to show you here is a three-year graphic that just shows you, and this is for actually the first five months' data that we have in on sales tax. So you would see a stable increase, steady increase that shows a good trend there on sales tax collections. And that really is what I was going to show you as far as current year performance. Now we want to just get into what we're looking at for the 2023 budget. And all these numbers are still preliminary as we work through this, but wanted to go through what we're looking at here. First of all, with sales tax, sales and use tax, what you see on this graphic here is 2020 and 2021 actual, along with '22 and '23 budget. What we've done for the 2023 budget at this time is we've held it at level with 2021 actual. That's actually a 13.5% increase over the '22 budget. And then what we had done in the '22 budget was have it at 2020 actual. So you can just see a visual of that. We're trying to be conservative with that, go with the previous year's actual for the next year's budget. And you can see there how those revenue streams are broken out. Sales tax is made up of the 1% general sales tax, which is broken out between 50.5% or 51.5% property tax relief that goes to the general fund. You've got 30% that goes to your infrastructure fund, and 18.5% that goes to the Economic Development Fund. And then, of course, you've got your 3.4% sales tax for the Alara Center. That goes to debt service and capital. And your most recently approved half percent sales tax for streets and water infrastructure. Besides that, you can see there's a use tax number there. That use tax is dedicated for flood protection, so goes right for those capital maintenance expenses. And then looking at state aid, same graphic as before, the two previous years, 20 and 21 actual, and '22 and '23 budgeted. That, we've run the same, the same scenario where we're going to hold it at 2021 actual for the '23 budget. We are waiting for guidance from the state through the League of Cities on it yet. We would normally, I believe this month, get some guidance on that, and we'll address it accordingly. But what we have by keeping at 21 actual would be at 8.2% increase over the previous year budget. And then highway user tax, as we, or we like to call gas tax, that, we'll continue to monitor this as the year goes, and we're waiting for guidance from the state. But for now, what we have in there is equivalent with 21 actual for '23. Like I said, we'll adjust if needed, but that brings in roughly $2.9 million. And that goes to our street infrastructure fund. The good thing is, some of the sales tax help offset this tax that goes into our street capital maintenance fund, but it does affect what's available for street projects. And then prairie dog, prairie dog funds comes from oil and gas tax revenues from the state. If you remember this, in the past, there's different buckets that need to fill up till it hits buckets for cities and counties. We do expect those buckets to fill for us in this biennium, probably not till 2023, but we do feel comfortable enough that they'll feel that we've budgeted for that. We'll continue to monitor this, but this is based on, you know, the barrel price and activity, and that oil, gas tax revenue is shared impartially with cities and counties. So we'll continue to monitor that. We haven't finished the budget on this yet. We've primarily targeted for streets, capital infrastructure, but also looking at our utility funds and water wastewater.
Maureen, is it still the case that those funds can't be used for bonded projects?
That's correct. You know, you can use it to buy down, so you bond less, but you can't use it to make bond payments. So you just can't use it to promise a bond. So then when we look at franchise fees and building permits, a couple other important revenue sources for us to give us some indicators. We're budgeting permit fees at this time and some other related permits and licenses. We're just looking at a general five-year average, and that seems to be appropriate. As far as franchise fees, we do see a decrease in our cable franchise, but that's, we are seeing increases in the areas of our Excel and NOTAC franchise. The NOTAC, we are seeing a 23% increase, and that $800,000 was an increase from the previous year. So we're really seeing the impacts of those data centers and, of course, scientific and the impacts that that has on our revenue stream there. As far as Excel, that's broken out between electric and gas, and you can see it's about 70% electric and 30% gas. And that's 17% increase there. And that, you know, that Excel, and it's going to depend on, you know, not just the rate, but also the weather. So that's, that varies up and down, but 1.4 seems to be a pretty good indication. And then looking at the mill levy, the mayor had stated this at the beginning of the presentation. We are looking at holding the levy flat at 97.02 estimated mills. The value of a mill goes estimated up to $254,000, up from $243,000, which 1.72% comes from growth and the remainder from valuation. You can see, as the mayor also stated, we've cut the last few, couple years. So we wanted to give you a little bit of historical information on that, just since 2020. Now here, you can see some graphics of the general fund and how it breaks out in two different ways, both by category and by function. Right now, we're estimating about $45.8 million estimate for 2023. This is looking at the general fund. It is an increase of about 6%. This inflationary factor recently on the CPI for areas, 9%. What this does include is fully funding that salary plan, getting people up to market, and fully funding that capital reserve. We haven't completely funded that capital reserve for a few years, and it's come to a time where we're going to have to start making sure we fund that again. But looking at it by category, you can see the general fund is mainly people. 78% of the budget is for wages and benefits. And then looking by function, it's mostly public safety, 53%, streets and engineering, 18%, health, 5%, and the rest, general government. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tanji, and then I'll be back to wrap things up.
Thank you, Maureen. Good evening, Mayor Bochinski, Council President Sandy, and members of the council. I'll be providing a look at the 2023 salary plan as part of the budgeting process. Thank you to the department heads and city administrator Todd Phelan and Mayor Bochinski for all the time and hours spent in meetings and review of the salary plan and budget overall. And a special thank you to Gretchen Gitter, our HR manager, who so diligently worked requesting, evaluating, and entering in the extraordinary amount of data required to make this salary plan work. The council can find the entirety of the salary plan draft attached to tonight's agenda. So as I'm sure you are all aware, it has become increasingly difficult to recruit and retain employees in the current climate for all employers, and the city is no exception. I've listed a few updates on this slide that we have incorporated into our compensation system and hiring process to increase our competitiveness. So the city has focused on creating career paths for employees, so there's room for growth and development. We've also incorporated 5% increases for our water departments when they get certification, when they get state certifications. As we have increased the starting, also, we have increased the starting wages for our bus operators, dial-a-ride operators, as well as water operators to increase our applicant draw. Additionally, we have incorporated an employee referral bonus to any employee that refers an applicant that gets hired on to a full-time position. So these changes have been well-received by employees and administration, and I believe are aiding in both recruitment and retention. So on to the salary plan. Let me remind the council that we have a salary plan that is primarily market-based with a performance component. We have updated our comparator cities back in 2020 to include the 12 that's listed on the next slide. We did have to adjust those 12 cities for 2023 salary plan. We removed the city of Duluth as a comparator for 2023, as Duluth has several unsettled union contracts since 2020, and so their rate of pay has not increased since the year 2020. Also, Rapid City has implemented a new salary plan compensation system that includes large salary pay bands, which, when plugged into our own salary system, skews the data. It increases our lower-range position. It increases our lower range positions too high and drags down our upper range positions. So we've only used partial data from the Rapid City entity. As a reminder, these are the 12 survey cities that were changed to in 2020. And this is our first look at what that salary plan increase percentage is for 2023. And it's the green line on the far left, it's 4.13%. The overall ask for the salary plan this year is $1.2 million and I'll show you how this breaks down in the plan in a few slides. And you can see this slide also includes a historic look at what the salary plan percentage has been for the past 10 years, as well as what that has meant in terms of dollar amounts. So this is a look at what the actual survey cities reported for 2023. And what that entails is we look at cost of living increases, performance increases and any step increases from our comparator entities to get an overall percent. Typically, we try and get the 2023 data, however, it's likely that many budgets have not been settled for 2023, so we end up with 2022 data and then age that to 2023. So a look at how that breaks out for the 4.13%, it's multiplied times the current general fund salary base and that number equaled 911,000. And then additional money was added to the plan to for those positions that fell under our 80% comp ratio to the tune of $306,500, which is where our salary range starts at that 80%. And that brings us to the total of 1.2 million. Out of that increase, 97% will go to market adjustments and only 3% will remain for merit or performance increases. The average increase for employees that receive market increases will be about $1.41 and those performance dollars equates to about 5 cents per employee in average. So I think this pie chart illustrates, not sure what happened to this pie chart. Hopefully, in your packet, it breaks it out a little better, but the overall blue percentage is the actual market movement in our salary plan. The yellow piece, the yellow pie chart piece, is the additional money that was added to the plan to fund the under 80% positions and that PFP adjustment of 35,000, that 3% is what's remaining for performance. If we extrapolate that to all funds, you're looking at 1.7 million for the overall salary plan percent. And you can see the pie chart mimics the general fund. So a lot of the same percentage breakout for the market increases, the below 80% increase as well as the performance adjustments. Here's a 10-year review of our market and performance or merit breakout. As you can see, the large blue line in 2023 is our market funds and there are a few dollars left to performance funds over the last few years and I'd like you to pay special attention to that. In 2022, approximately a third of the plan went to performance dollars, but for 2021, there were no performance dollars allocated. And for 2020, much like 2023, there was large market movement and so, once again, did not have very much funding for performance pieces. I think it's important to note that this plan is designed to be both a market and a performance pay plan and that the performance piece of the plan is designed to motivate employees by paying them an increase with good performance. I think the performance piece of the plan can become de-motivating when the performance piece is not adequately funded, as in recent years. I will speak more to this issue with a possible way forward in a couple of slides. So first, let's look at what has been incorporated into the general fund as far as promotions and new positions. Once again, we have incorporated many promotions as part of career path development and succession planning. Also included in the 2023 budget are six police officers as part of the cops hiring grant, where the city will page as 25% of the cost for the first year and then gradually increase the share percentage over the next three years. The total cost for 2023 equates to about 1.5 new police officers. Additionally, there are two 911, 911 dispatcher trainee positions budgeted, the city share of which is 58.1%. And the civil engineering specialist added for the engineering department, which most of the cost associated with this additional position will be offset with stormwater funds. This is a look at positions outside of the general fund. These promotions were added to funds, enterprise funds and special revenue funds. All right. And lastly, this slide looks at a couple of our competitive benefit offerings. Hiring and retaining employees often comes down to benefits, to salary and benefits, specifically these two benefits. Andy Pers, our pension plan, as well as our health insurance. Thanks to the leadership of Council President Sandy and Council Member Wygell, the city broke away from the Health Insurance Administration under Andy Pers and entered into our own contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota. And that was a good move for the city and resulted in savings. And also, thanks to the leadership of Council Member Wygell, we implemented the Public Safety Plan in 2021 for our law enforcement and fire suppression personnel. So as we keep looking to improve our benefits for employees, we have enlisted the assistance of Brown and Brown Consulting Group. We're hopeful that they'll negotiate superior health and other insurance contracts on our behalf. It's early on in our partnership, but we do look to have proposals from Brown and Brown in late August to present to the Pension and Insurance Committee. As part of the budgeting process, we have budgeted 7% for health insurance increase for 2023. And if the Brown and Brown Group is able to come up with a proposal for health insurance benefits for a reduced cost, I would propose that the savings realized be reallocated into the performance dollars for the salary plan. Each 1% decrease out of that seven would add $32,428 into performance funding. If the proposal would come in at a 0% increase, all 7% could fund the performance piece of the salary plan, which would equate to $226,997, which equates to about 33 cents an hour versus the nickel an hour I spoke to earlier. So, things to discuss and talk about. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Tangi. I just want to wrap it up then with this final slide and open it up to questions at the end or comments. Looking ahead, you should have received an invitation from the Director of the Alara Center, Anna Rosberg, for a joint meeting of the City Council Alara Center, Alara Event Center Commission for July 13th. The meeting time is set for noon, but she has made herself available. If anybody wants to come an hour early at 11 o'clock and she'd be happy to give a facility tour for anybody, any council members that would like to join for that. And then the meeting will start at noon. We do plan to come back before you to present the mayor's budget in its entirety on July 18th. That's a city council meeting date at 5:30. And then, the week of July 25th, the exact day and time to be determined, but we'll set up a meeting with the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks Wastewater Interconnect Advisory Committee. Finally, we look to preliminary approval of the budget on August 1st, which leads to final approval on September 19th. Should leave time within there for more discussion and work sessions if needed. Also, within that time period, just remember between preliminary approval and final approval, you can always decrease the budget after preliminary, you just can't increase. Also, what we would communicate in between that time period is with Grand Forks County and they'll send out estimated tax bills to to all households with those estimates. With that, I would open up for questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? I guess, Tangi, if you're available too, for Maureen or Tangi. I guess anyone who wants to start in council. Mr. Weber, please.
The salary plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A 4% increase sounds like something very nice, but of course, we've had heavy inflation. CPI is what? Inflation's gone up almost twice that. So this isn't actually an increase in earning power. It's it's a cut of almost, well, of over 4%, right? And so that's that's deeply concerning to me. And then, you said we have a market base plus a performance, but the performance, we've been, we've not had a performance increase the last couple of years. And even this year, of the 1.2 million dollars, 35,000. So your own calculation there, employees getting the market increase, which isn't actually an increase because of inflation, it's a decrease. And then, the performance piece, the the market increase, which isn't an increase, $1.40, the performance, a nickel. Yeah. So those are a couple of places to start on the payroll. What what are we going to do to address these deeply concerning aspects of the payroll plan?
As far as the market increase, we are looking primarily at $2022 age to 2023. Some of the market increases that we've seen across our entities, we have tried to factor into the benchmark data to make sure that our positions are increasing as as proposed, but you are right, that it's it's not going to match the CPI. And so, as such, until that evens out, we will be behind. As far as the performance piece, that is part of why I had suggested, if we can see a cost savings with health insurance, that we add additional funding to the salary plan. That's just one way. The council certainly can discuss alternative ways to add money to fund the salary plan or to additionally compensate employees.
It's my, sorry, it's my understanding Fargo did a mid-year adjustment, just off-budget or, you know, beyond the budget cycle of a 5% increase to try to catch up this lag of earning power. Is there any intention to do something similar here?
And once again, that would have to be something that would be originated from the city council to provide funding for that, like I discussed on the first slide.
You're absolutely right. This is our job, isn't it?
Yep. But but internally, we have looked at increasing the promotional availabilities, increasing, you know, adding certification increases, increasing our starting wages to try and compete with some of that, because we do have some flexibility in the salary plan. But as far as adding additional money, that would be something that the city council would have to address.
And and I think it's important for us to address this because we're, the way we do this, we do a survey of our comparable cities, the dozen, but this is before they've done their increase. So we're already a year behind in our increases, which means that from a budget perspective, we're just getting, in some ways, further and further behind, especially in this rapidly changing inflationary environment right now. City council needs to step up and do some, make some tough decisions about this. Okay?
And Mayor Bochinski, I think if you look at, what we've looked at our, at our, our salary plan, I think on entry level and probably soon there, we're really competitive because we can start somebody at, you know, 5, 10, 15% above what the minimum is, just to be competitive. I think some of the challenges we are, we've implemented promotional ladders, as Ms. Pavett talked about, to ensure once people get in the organization that we can keep moving them up into various positions, whether they're senior positions or lead or whatever the equivalent in the various organizations, just so they see a ladder of success, so they can see promotional increases that could add up to 5 to 10% as they move up to the various certification levels. So that's another way that we can do it, so you don't stay stagnant. However, probably the the one thing we did do is we we looked at the department head category, okay, just to see where are we at versus our comparisons in actual dollars. And I'm going to just give you a rough average. I would say our department heads at the city of Grand Forks are probably 10,000 to 15,000 lower than their comparisons in those same communities, okay? I think as you go down the organization in every one of those departments, it probably becomes less and less, just because people make less and less. But just so you know, at at the top levels, and that filters down to the various levels, we are below where our comparison cities are and you should be very thankful that you really have dedicated, experienced department heads that have been around here a while. But we have to address that, but it's hard to address that in one fell swoop. So those are some things that we're talking about. How do we remain competitive with our system that moves people up? And we have fallen behind some of our comparisons and so we're looking at strategies on how we can do that. And we just use the department head, because that was a good category of 12 to 14 individuals and positions that we could take a look at and look at comparisons. And now, our job is really to look through the whole salary plan to make sure we're competitive.
So so one of the strengths that we currently have is we're providing lots of opportunity for promotion. But our struggles around retaining people are actually creating some of those opportunities for promotion. People are having to move up into jobs, right? I think that one of the best ways for us to be thankful that we have good people would be to pay them. Yes.
All right. And I, we were just at a recent, Tangi and I were at a recent employee rep group. And so, I think what what we heard as a message is, number one, they really do appreciate working for the city of Grand Forks. They do understand the inflationary measures and they would like to have larger raises, but they do understand the the challenge of that in these inflationary times. So just so you know, you have, you have city employees that are representing the various departments that do understand the challenges. Yes, they would like larger increases, but they know that comes at a challenge at the same time. So they're, they do understand the context. And I think what they really want you to understand is that they enjoy working for the city of Grand Forks, they really appreciate providing services and whatever you can do as city council is really important. As Tangi pointed out, or Ms. Pavett, is that the pension is really important, health insurance is really important, and then finally, obviously, what they get paid is really important too. So whatever we can do in those three years is really is what they emphasized at their last meeting.
Good. I, I was a business owner for 25 years, making payroll every two weeks. And a raise is something that people appreciate, but I think even more important to them is a place that they enjoy working at and feeling appreciated. Those are terribly important. But they can't take the pay cut that's the result of inflation at this time.
I guess I got a few comments on that subject and, you know, keep in mind inflation, you know, you're seeing the problems of that. One of the big problems for a city is our revenues take a year or two to catch up. So we have inflationary, you're going to see inflated revenues in the future, but they aren't going to come now. And when you have an inflationary environment like this, I think it's really difficult to put even more burden on your taxpayers. So the hope would be to do the best we can and as inflation lowers, to keep our raises above that so you can catch up. But, you know, I like the idea that you talked about, like what Fargo did with the COLA. So we, you know, last year, we looked at our our pension plan and we did a great job of funding that with excess sales revenue, sales tax revenue. As the year goes on, and it could be great for council to look at that and maybe we can make a COLA adjustment and supplement to city staff with some of that sales tax revenue where we're not hitting our taxpayers, because inflation hits everybody. It hits, it hits us, we all have to pay our property tax as well and throwing another burden on people is tough. And we've got to take care of our employees too. I think we've, we've done a decent job. It's compared to the beginning of the year where you are retaining more employees, I think it's been a little easier to find, some of that pressure has come off. But the goal would be to continue to have, continue to have increases without having to, you know, to put a big burden on the taxpayers one year. And as inflation comes down, that we get above that in the coming years and do the best we can, you know, give yourself a promotional opportunity. So, you know, maybe you make a 10 or 12% increase in that new role where you're beating inflation. So it's certainly a balance. I think that's where we tried to land for this year, but be something I'd really be interested in looking, you know, as if sales tax revenue ends up doing well, if we want to put that towards that defined pension burden, or do you want to look at some sort of, you know, COLA adjustment or supplement later on in the year as we see where revenues are? But just my thoughts.
And we've done a great job of funding the pension obligations and you've, you've pushed for an aggressive approach to that. I hope that we would consider I hope that we would consider an aggressive approach to addressing these long-term payroll problems as well. Thanks.
President Sandy.
I didn't realize that we had long-term payroll problems. I'm a little bit surprised by the conversation that's going on right now, knowing that we do a salary survey every year for this exact reason. And so, Mr. Fealan, I appreciate what you're saying, but I'm having a hard time understanding how our department heads are 15 percent behind their peers in our 12 cities when we're surveying the salaries every year. I don't know how that's actually possible unless there's a flaw with our process.
Mayor Bochensky and Council President Sandy, I think what we determined to do is that we have a system that, we don't have a step system like other communities like, like you would have eight steps across the range to meet your salary. What our concern was as the administration is, we've been like surveying communities, we've been surveying their ranges, we've been then saying, where's that midpoint of that range?
Sure.
But my concern was, and our concern as administration, where are their actuals? Because people are saying, well, they're getting a COLA, plus they're getting a step, plus they're getting something else. Where are their actuals? And that's why we went out, let's just look at department heads and where they're actually at. And then when we look at where they actually are in that salary range, that, you know, we thought, wait, we're doing pretty well.
Finding midpoint, and they're not at midpoint.
What they're finding is those same comparison studies are moving through their salary ranges much faster than our system allows us to move forward. So I think that's where the perplexity is at looking at the actuals. And other systems, other payroll systems and other comparable are moving their individuals through that salary range quicker than ours is. And as you go through the years, we've fallen a little bit behind. And to make one-time adjustments is going to take some contemplation or look at a different salary system. So that was really the, we wanted to point out to you is that even though we've come back to you and we've all said, hey, we're right where we should be, we went back and looked at the actuals, individuals in those, in those cities, whether it's been one-time bumps or they brought them in higher in the salary ranges, they've been more aggressive on where they've placed those people in their salary ranges.
Got it. That's great information. I was unaware of that. There were, I heard lots of really good things about the plan and Ms. Povet, I really appreciate, and of course, our HR department working on this. I do get a little bit leery about picking and choosing. So for example, Rapid City, this is a great example. We threw out positions out of the survey and ended up at a 10 percent increase. What would it have been had we kept those, all those positions in? Would it have been higher or would it have been lower? And then we threw out Duluth. And I know that Duluth now has gone, they've had a couple of years. But, Mr. Fealan, you yourself have lectured me on how important it is to stay the course with this, you have, right? In this room, you've told me, Dana, we can't pick and choose. We can't throw things out just because there's something super hot. And so I understand what we're trying to do, and I certainly recognize the budgetary issues and the inflation. I just, I'm not 100 percent sure that we should be picking and choosing today when we haven't committed to picking and choosing in years gone by for the exact same reasons, right? And so I don't know, I don't have any recommendations. I appreciate what you've done here, and I know that this is important work. I just, I'm not, for example, next year Duluth comes back and Duluth, they finally renegotiate all those contracts and it's 28 percent increase across the board. Are we then going to add that into our salary survey?
Those are really good questions, Council President Sandy. And I'd like to address, first I'll address Duluth. We did use Duluth last year, even though they didn't have any current, they were still in negotiations at that point in using 2020 salaries. But we did age the data for our 2022 salary plan, so we felt comfortable doing that. But aging data three years in a row, it gets skewed, so we weren't comfortable carrying that over. The good thing is they're, the piece of Duluth, they're all negotiations, they're contracts. So once they are actually settled, they'll be retroactive to '21, '22, '23 and have percentage breakouts that we can actually utilize. So we should be able to lump Duluth right back in once they do settle. Okay. And Rapid City?
That's great.
Yeah, great.
That is great.
As far as Rapid City, so the 10 percent for Rapid City is the overall. That's their step increases, their cost of living increases, their performance increases, all lumped in. And that's what they saw as part of their new salary plan. They implemented a new salary plan and it ended up being a 10 percent increase to their overall wages. Now, the part that we didn't utilize because of the pay bounds that they implemented was actually for our benchmark data. And so where our positions move range-wise. And so that's just one of the 12 data points that we had to remove. And so I don't anticipate that that would be an issue. It doesn't skew the data that greatly.
Okay. Great information. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Further comments, Vice President Mock, please.
You know, it is important to remember that we are one of the largest employers in town and have to be competitive. Are we looking at other options, you know, maybe flex time or work from home or ways to be competitive that aren't just salary or promotion related, that give employees options?
Councilmember Mock, absolutely we are. And we are working with the employee reps. I think you remember a couple of months back, we did bring forward the code change that allowed for an increase in wellness hours to be accrued. And we work very closely with our employee reps program. And they have different subcommittees that they've got working recruitment and retention. And we try and keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on with our employees. So definitely looking at alternatives as well.
All right. Any further comments, just presentation tonight? More work to be done? All right, seeing none, we will move on. I believe we don't have any second readings or ordinances, so move on to four action I know we needed to pull 413 and 417. Is there any other items outside of 413 and 417 that any council members would like to pull for further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, President Sandy.
I think Mr. Weber may want to pull 4.9, but I'm not sure. I'll let him decide.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, please.
I pulled 4.9. Thank you, Mr. Weber. No problem. All right. With that, we would be looking for a motion for items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.10, 4.11, 4.12, 4.14, 4.15, and 4.16. If I get a motion to approve those items, kind of motion from President Sandy and a second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry unanimously. So 4.9. 4.9.
All right. So 4.9 bid award for project number 8510, City Hall Parking Lot Expansion.
I would imagine we're ready for a vote on that one, Mr. Weber?
I'm ready to vote, Mr. Mayor. Yes, please.
Well, you want to motion it, Mr. Weber?
Sure. I'll move approval.
All right. We got a motion from Mr. Weber, we got a second from President Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries with Mr. Weber's sending.
4.13 is a bid award for project 8357 Downtown Alley Reconstruct.
Mr. Grasser, please.
Thank you, Mayor Bochensky, members of city council. We, as recall, you were briefed on the bid to award the electrical services contracts for the alley repaving in the downtown alley there behind Lyons. We actually opened bids and the, we bid two alternates, there was an A and a B. One was for copper wire, one was for aluminum wire. Industry is using both. We thought that there was actually going to be a bigger difference between the materials on the copper and the aluminum. The staff report that you have before you right now recommends the aluminum wire bid at basically $254,000. We started thinking about it, we actually had a discussion with, well, Mr. Vean brought up the question of longevity. And actually, we think that copper in general probably is a better product long-term than aluminum. I don't think it's, I don't want to represent that it's that much better, that much, but copper is, and these types of services, I know we use copper in the city when we're doing electrical underground. Given the fact that there's a very small discrepancy, it's about $9,000 in cost, you know, what we're seeing is the majority of the cost to do this work, I think, are ending up in the labor. And the cost of material is relatively minor. And so we'd actually like to change our recommendation at this point in time and award alternate A. The same low bidder, doesn't change the bid or anything like that, but it would be alternate A, which would be the copper instead of the aluminum.
What was the cost on the copper?
Copper is, the low bid on that one is $263,460. The aluminum would have been $254 and some change.
Okay.
So it's about $9,000 difference in cost.
All right. Any further questions or comments, Mr. Grasser on the item? Mr. Weber, or Mr. Weigle?
Ooh, I was kidding. I'll move approval that we go with alternate A with copper for the low bidder.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? I got a second.
I'll second that if you can.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vean seconds it. Any further comment on item 4.13? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Grasser.
4.17 is a letter of credit for Fu Fang USA, staff report as well as attachments A through F.
Thank you. Mr. Gostad, do you have an update on the sale?
I do. Since the last meeting, I've had a number of discussions with the bank directly on the terms of letter of credit. And they've asked for some changes to the letter of credit. And I'll just talk a little bit about, it goes primarily to the automatic renewal clause. Last week, I talked about the automatic renewal, the letter of credit would renew annually until we provide notice that the facility is substantially completed and the developer has paid those pre-assessment costs that are required under the development agreement. The bank asked that that be modified such that they would provide, it would be automatically renewed unless the bank provided us notice 60 days in advance of the renewal date, that they weren't going to extend the letter of credit. The issue with that, of course, is that that then potentially could leave the city without a letter of credit at that point. However, in exchange for providing that notice of non-extension, there was another provision added that allowed for a drawing on the letter of credit. So currently, or what was presented last week, is there were two events that the city could draw on the letter of credit. One would be if there was a default under the development agreement, or if there was a termination event under the development agreement, we could tap into that $5 million, receive the $5 million and use that to pay back those costs and expenses. As a result of the bank adding in that 60-day non-renewal provision, we're adding a third means in which we can tap into that letter of credit, which would be if, after we get that 60-day notice, Fu Fang then has to go out and find a letter of credit that is equal to what we already have, what we have from this MUFG entity meeting. It has to be the same amount, it has to be the same drawing provisions, they have to have the same financial qualifications, meaning they're subject to US banking laws, and they meet the standards and cores and the Moody ratings. If we get that, basically replace it, then we're in the same spot. But if they don't obtain that replacement letter of credit within 45 days after we receive that notice, we can then tap into that letter of credit and we'd receive that $5 million. And so rather than having the letter of credit under those set of circumstances, we'd actually have $5 million in the bank. And so I thought that seemed reasonable as an alternative. But as a result, we do, we will need to amend the development agreement because the development agreement only says that we can tap or make a draw on the letter of credit under a default or a termination event, not if they don't replace the letter of credit. So we're going to, I'm proposing that the council, allow me to draft, it's a very short amendment to the development agreement, to allow for that to be a drawing event as well if we don't get that replacement letter of credit. One thing that could happen is you could run into a situation where the financial institution, MUFG, decides not to extend or renew, and for whatever reason, Fu Fang doesn't decide to go out and get the letter of credit, they just as soon keep that money or have us get that money. But there may not be a independent default event or termination event. They're still moving forward under the development agreement. And so they were proposing to place that money into an escrow account so that it would be used if there was that termination or default event subsequently. It could happen, so we're drafting an escrow agreement that basically we deposit the money into an escrow account. And like there is currently, if there is a vent to termination or a divented default, we would draw and take all that money out of the escrow account. So you'll be seeing that modification to the development agreement in the near future, assuming you would agree with these changes. I've talked to the bank, they've, they just, because it was a federal holiday today, New York recognized that, their New York legal team wasn't available to approve this, but they believe that that will be forthcoming tomorrow. Fu Fang has already approved these changes with respect to the letter of credit and the modification for the development agreement and the escrow account and the use of that money if there is a default or a termination event. I'm expecting the letter of credit will be issued on or before this Friday. We'll get an email with it signed, and then it'll be, the original will be mailed out and delivered to City Hall. So what I'd ask is the council move to approve the letter of credit as modified, and I think that was posted today. There was a red line version that was posted today that shows the various changes that I just talked about. There's a few other non-substantive changes as well, but the primary one was the renewal clause and our ability to tap into the letter of credit if there isn't a replacement letter of credit. And then to proceed with an amendment to the development agreement regarding the drawing of the letter of credit and the creation of the escrow account for those funds. Be happy to answer any questions.
I got a, I guess the obvious question, this would be further in the benefit of the city then as opposed to what was approved last week or was looked at last week?
It's actually more security because if they, if the bank decides not to extend that, the current letter of credit and Fu Fang doesn't go out and get a replacement, now I have $5 million in the bank.
Mr. Mayor?
One more question on the amendment. Would you just need to have that within a year? I mean, essentially, you've got a year of the letter of credit already in existence, but you'd rather do that sooner rather than later?
That's correct. We'd like to start working on that as soon as possible.
Mr. Weber, please.
So it wouldn't just be a letter of credit, but we'd have both the letter of credit and an escrow account?
No. If the, if the bank sends out the notice that we're not going to extend the letter of credit, and that has to be received 60 days in advance of the extension date. If we don't receive it within 60 days, it automatically renews, okay? Once we get that notice, then Fu Fang has to go out and, has to go out and find a replacement letter of credit within 45 days. If they don't do that, then we draw on the letter of credit and that, and that money then is placed into an escrow account if there hasn't been an otherwise default or termination event.
And it also gives us And it also gives us the benefit of an auto renewal instead of us having to renew it each year?
It, the, the letter of credit was to automatically renew anyways, it was just the methodology of the automatic renewal clause.
President Sandy?
Mr. Murray, thank you, Mr. Gosted, this is very good information, I think it's a good change for our community. Just out of curiosity, who's responsible for monitoring during that, after the 45 days and before the 60 days is up? Who's personally responsible for making sure that we draw that money out? And because if we get to day 61, we miss our opportunity, correct?
That's correct, I'm suspecting it's going to be my office, working with the finance department and monitoring once that six, once we get that, if we get that notice, monitoring that 45 days, and if on day 45, we do not have that replacement letter of credit, on day 46, we make the demand on the letter of credit. And under the terms of the letter of credit, they have seven calendar days then to honor it.
Thank you, that's important, important fault.
All right, any further questions or comments from Mr. Gosted?
I don't have any further.
Yeah, Mr. Vean?
I just was wondering, who instigated or why did they want to make this change? What was, what was the rationale or reasoning?
I can, I can answer that. Councilman Vean, it came from the bank, made the request of me, and I think it was primarily because it's their letter of credit and they wanted to have some ability to themselves not to renew it, otherwise they'd be relying upon the city once the, the plant is substantially completed.
So is the biggest risk for us just making sure, you know, you're aligned with the finance department and follow, do the annual follow-up?
Correct, well, it would be, once we receive the, the notice of non-renewal from the bank, monitoring it for the next 45 days to assure that we receive a replacement letter of credit. And if the replacement letter of credit doesn't come in, then making the draw on the current letter of credit with the bank.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
All right, anything further? Sounds good. Mr. President Sandy said it'd be an approval of the letter of credit as, as posted today and with the, I guess designation or the authority to begin the amendment process of the development agreement to include that? Does that summarize your motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay, we got a motion, do we have a second? Yes, second, we got, Weigle had his hand up first, we'll give to Mr. Weigle. Any further comment on the item? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries, the dockler dissenting. Let's move on to five information items.
5.1 is portfolio management summary as of May 31st.
Thank you. Six citizen comments? Mr. Long, do we get a?
Yeah, we have three citizen comments, first Dennis Cadlec.
Mr. Cadlec, please.
I have to insist that Jody go up before I, since she requested well before I did. It would be proper for me to speak before her.
Mr. Cadlec, you got, would you like to speak now? I'm not understanding.
I, I was going to speak after Jody spoke.
Okay.
Jody had planned it well before I did to speak. It would not be proper for me to go before her.
Look at that, ethics of work, it's awesome.
Okay.
Okay, Jody Carlson.
For those who don't know, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but for those who don't know, I did make a request to be on the agenda for this week's meeting, and that was declined. I do have some good, very pertinent information that I feel is important to share with you. So, please bear with me, I was trying to get the last of my, my notes together here. Just a couple of housework types of things. Be very aware that I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America. I missed the pledge of allegiance this morning, so I want you to be very aware that that is where my, my pledge lies, is with my, my country, my United States of America. I also want you to know that in the year 2020, that you, the city council held 62 meetings. There are 53 meetings that do not have, or excuse me, 43 meetings that do not have minutes. In 2021, there were 51 city council meetings, there are 23 of those that do not have meeting minutes. And thus far, in 2022, there are 24 meetings that do not have council, council meeting minutes. And the reason that I know that is when I was in discussion with the North Dakota Department of Equalization, that's one of the things, they wanted to look back to see when we have had discussions regarding public meetings having to do with Fu Fang. So as, between the phone call and, and myself with this Department of Equalization, we were attempting to look up meeting minutes, and those were not available for us to be able to see whether or not there was a public meeting held and how things were voted on, and whether or not there were any exhibits or anything that were shared. Again, that was not available, that's just, that's just for your information. Many promises during this project have been made to the people who live in this city, and we would like to hold you to those promises. I would, one of the things that I, I just have to comment that is, is very interesting because you all know I've been doing a lot of study, I like to read, I'm, I'm a pretty quick study. I see why Mr. Gosted moved his chair up front, if you, if you caught the video of the whisper back and forth between the two of you. Did you catch that whisper? When, when Mr., when Craig Spicer stood up here and asked the question, so is the land officially sold? We hear from you, what do I say? And Gosted says, tell him I don't know. So when I, when I see that he has moved his chair from down here, it makes me very curious because one of the things that you have always said to us is that you will always be transparent with us. And with listening to that comment, I see that that's not so because if you have to ask them how to answer a question, to me, that proves that you're not transparent with that question. With conflicts of interest, conflicts of interest between many of the councils and the commissions regarding this Fu Fang thing, and if my husband so desires to speak on it, but he's a pretty good study as well, and there are many connections to building and development and real estate and electricity and concrete work and contracting and between the city council, between the county commission, and between the planning and zoning. And I think that that needs to be looked at very closely because I do truly believe there are conflicts of interest, such as how do you have a husband on one city council and a wife on planning and zoning, but you're going to disagree with other, with each other? I just think that that's something that needs to be looked into with this. Mr. Gosted, just so you all understand my perspective, when I make an accusation of conflicts of interest regarding the petitions, this is what I see, okay? And I understand, and I have requested a copy from Sherry, which again, Sherry, thank you very much, you're very prompt in responding to my requests, and I, and I do appreciate that. I have, I have an old billing from Mr. Gosted regarding his invoices that he has charged the city for, his work, and he's paid about $258,000 a year or something. He gets a monthly fee of like $9,000 for whatever, and, and I don't have an issue with that. The issue that I have is that when I look at, and there's many out here that have, have seen the same paperwork that I have, that he bills separately for any of his work on Fu Fang. And thus far, I would dare say it's probably climbing pretty close to a quarter million dollars, I'm guessing. But again, I'm waiting for that work from Sherry. Apparently, it's necessary for you to redact some of that information before it comes to me, so we'll see how that goes. But, the point of that is, is with the petitions, now, if the petitions had gone through and we had put it to a vote, because you're getting this extra money because you're billing separately for Fu Fang, that's not part of your city council duties apparently, according to the contract that you wrote for yourself when you began your job with the city. So anything that comes from Fu Fang is a little separate in-your-pocket money, which right now is up over $200,000, or I don't, again, I'm waiting for the, for the information on that. However, if you deny the petition from the people, that means Fu Fang carries on, right? And your company continues to be paid for work on Fu Fang. Well, to me, if there's a financial gain in it, as Ms. Mock has recused herself in this case, because there is a financial gain with, with AE2S, she has recused herself, Mr. Gosted should have never been the person to look at the petition. He has a financial gain to decline the petitions. He declines the petition, he gets a little extra pocket money and life is good. I think, I think that, I think that you have, have, and I won't say all, I won't include all of you, but, but you know who you are, have lost sight of the people. You work for us. Do you realize that? You work for us, really. And you, you are here to represent the voices of the people. And when I look back at the meeting minutes, and it includes ward meetings in there as well, and there was a ward meeting, and I couldn't find my notebook, there, there was a ward meeting that Katie had with her people in her ward prior to this Fu Fang. There was a meeting in Ward 7, and that, I believe, was the end of 2019. And there was a ward meeting that included both Wards 1 and 2 that was held the middle of 2019. And since that time, according to record, there have been no other ward meetings. I have to ask you, Mr. Botense, because I know you stated at the last meeting that there have been 10 public meetings on Fu Fang. Do you have the dates of those? Can you send, can you send me that information? Because I never heard, I never heard about one. I never heard about one. And, and the one thing that I find, find interesting is when I contacted the State Department of Commerce, and they said, well, we just had another public meeting on that just a week and a half ago. And I'm like, really? Well, where was that? Well, in Bismarck. I said, well, how am I supposed to know that there's a public meeting on the economic development aspects of Fu Fang that's taking place in Bismarck? They said, well, it's on the Secretary of State website, you know, so how are people supposed to know about these meetings? I did talk to, I did talk to a person who was actually running for city council this time around, and what I heard from that person is, I've been told it's a waste of time to have ward meetings because nobody shows up. You know, I don't know if that's true or not, but I know, but I know, Mr. Kwame, I don't know if he's on the, on the phone or whatever, I've, I've lived in my home where I live right now for 23 years, and I have never, ever received any notice of any ward meeting that was happening within, within the area that I live. I, I'm also very concerned that the council seems to continue to speak up for Mr. Tudorash. He has a voice, he can answer his own questions, you know? You're so on the ball, you're so on the ball to defend, even when Craig Spicer stood up here and asked him a question if he would mind if it went to a vote, what, you know, I tell you what, if it was my business, if I was starting up a business, I would say, let me answer that one. I, I can speak for my own business. I mean, why do you feel the need to defend him with that? Mr. Gosted, again, and, and if you feel picked on, probably because I disagree with you on many of your different decisions, that you faulted the people that did the petition, and you said that the petition should have gone through you for approval, and that, that you would have let the people know what they needed and to make sure that everything was correct. Well, when Mr. Coachman stood up here last week and he asked you the question about a county petition as far as against Fu Fang, you would not answer that question, you said you need to seek legal counsel. You know, someone's asking you, you know, in one side of your mouth, you're saying, we need your approval, which we don't, and on the other side, you're saying, well, I'm not going to tell you how to do it, you get your own lawyer kind of thing. So, again, just a conflict that, that sticks in my head. The Constitution of the United States of America, I have been doing a little bit study about that, that is the supreme law of the land, and the duty of that document is, is that you are bound to represent the citizens. That is about the citizens, that is our rights. And we have rights to our property, to our land, to, you know what our rights are, I don't have to go over them with you. That government is supposed to exist to secure the rights of the people. So you are here to make sure that our rights are protected, that's your job. And you're fighting us every step of the way. And that's not your job, you're here for us. That if, and the one thing, and this is falling a little bit into the issue of the annexation, in that if you are not applying, and in the Constitution, people have the rights to their land, and if you are not applying the Constitution as intended, that people have freedom of their land, your acts are null and void. People have the right to their land. You, and also another issue is you cannot force economic development, you cannot force annexation based on economic development. And the two-mile rule is something that was a made-up rule, made-up rule, that goes against our constitutional rights. That is our right, our land. If we, if, if we, if we want to hand that over to you and say, you know, if you guys want to annex this, I'm all, I'm, I'm all for it. But unless someone offers that up to you, you have no right to take that from them. And, and, and please know, I'm not a lawyer, I'm a registered nurse with a master's degree, I, I actually do have another meeting with another attorney tomorrow, but these are things that you all need to take into consideration. That no government act contrary to the Constitution can be valid, as that is a use of unlawful power of authority. And again, that, that's getting into not only our right to petition and our right to vote, but also the right of the people to keep and do with their land as they please. I thank you for giving me this time because I feel like I, I really, you guys really need to hear this. Forced annexation of land violates the Constitution of the United States of America. People have their freedom of land, and unless delegated to you by the people, any attempt is a misuse of power and a violation of the Constitution of the United States of America. Another issue I have heard regarding, regarding the annexation, because I've been involved with a weekly group of the business leaders who live out in, in that area, and my understanding, and, and I, I won't say this as gospel, I'm, I'm learning about this as I go, is that there are a few businesses out there who at one time or another had requested a service from the city. In order to get that service from the city, they were forced to sign a contract saying that they would never petition annexation of the land. Those people wanted to petition annexation of the land, but they felt that they had no recourse because of this illegal document that they signed with the city. And if you look up the law on that, you will see, you know, Sandy, you can shake your head and twitch your nose and whatever you want, but, but it's, you know, it, just open and twitch your nose and whatever you want, but, but it's, you know, it, just open your ears and listen, please, because I have, I have things that you need to hear. Um, but, but as far as forcing those people to sign that document, that, that is illegal. So when you look at the percentage of land, and actually, when I got in touch with, with the head region township person, Mr. Maticek, very kindly handed over to me the township rules, which I, I did look into, and I did contact some people that were involved in that, and one of the things that they were talking about is that land annexation should be held according to land value rather than land acreage. I don't know anything about that and whether or not that is true, but one thing to think about and investigate, and if you're making sure that you're following the rules of what you believe is a legal annexation, to have all your i's dotted and your t's crossed. Um, uh, okay, then I want to talk about the pilot program. Um, now, Fufang, because there's three different areas that have to do with incentives within the state of North Dakota. Is Fufang considered a local development organization? Is Fufang considered a local development organization? Okay, I'll, I'll-
Any comments? It's a citizen comment period, we've afforded you much longer than three minutes, please continue. If you have comments or questions or statements, please.
Please, let me finish. That, okay, so there's, there's three options. Okay, it's either a local development organization, um, which, which generally is going to involve potentially nonprofit organizations that are going to be involved in requesting some type of incentive for their business there. Um, it is a project that may be either a local development project, or it may be a primary sector business, but it also needs to include the aspect of tourism, or the third one is a primary sector business. So Fufang would be considered what, under those? It's not a trick question, it's really not. I mean, you're saying that it's a primary sector business, is what, is what I'm hearing. Right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and, and again, it's not, it's not a trick question.
I know, I'm trying to, to operate citizen comments, if you've got comments that are helpful for the city council, please make those. We're far beyond your time.
Okay, you, you know what, as far as comments go, is probably, I would dare say, well, I know at least three of you for sure have gotten up publicly and have said that you have answered all of our questions, you have not. So when we get up to speak, we get a time for comment, we don't get to answer questions. We don't get ward meetings, we don't get public meetings, we don't get town hall meetings. When have you answered these questions? That's my comment to that. I'll move on. So, the pilot, so if the pilot is a primary sector business, it needs to have a certificate from the Department of Commerce that it is a primary sector business, and, and that is required. I still do not have proof, Sheri says the city doesn't have that, the Department of Commerce says that the developer in the city is responsible for having that certificate, that is not available, and until that's available, they don't qualify for a, for a pilot incentive. Um, I did, as I said, talk with the Department of Commerce, the Equalization State Tax Commissioner, none of them have any awareness that there's any pilot project incentive going on in Grand Forks, and I don't know if, because that time for that to be implemented hasn't come yet, maybe, but anyway, they, they were, they were clueless on what was going on with that. But the thing is, is, is if it's a primary sector business, because, and, and we actually have this, Sheri and Maureen can both speak to it, that in, in all of your, and I requested again, copies of all the previous pilot agreements that the city has done, okay, and there, there's those three different types of business then, and what you say in, in, I would dare say 85% of your other pilot agreements, which by the way total almost $2 billion in pilot incentive, but all, about 85% of those other pilot programs that have been offered out have required a third-party review to be completed prior to offering someone this incentive. You can't pick and choose, that you've got, you've got companies that are one of three, and if they're a primary sector business, if the city does for one, the city does for all. And Fufang, rather than a third-party review, again, went through our, um, the Government Advisory Committee, which is essentially you guys and, and a couple more guys. So I, I'm, I'm very curious about that. Um, and then my, my, I believe my, my last comment has to do with the Uyghur Forest Prevention Act, which for those that stuck around at the last meeting are very aware of what I had to say, thank you for sticking around and, and listening to that. That is effective at, at midnight tonight, okay? Fufang, um, and Mr. Sandy, you know, you've said from the beginning, just like all these promises that we get, that if there is any proof of forced labor or use of forced labor with Fufang, supply chains, whatever, that this gets shut down. And I, I have appreciated that you've always said that, and a couple times I've thrown out the question to you again, are you sticking with that? Yes, you are. Okay, so, um, Fufang operates in the Xinjiang province, they do make use of coal and agricultural products, and they do receive provincial and national subsidies for their operation. Fufang benefits financially from the slave labor that happens over there. The US right now, as of midnight tonight, has a rebuttal presumption of guilt, which means as of right now, this very day, Fufang is guilty of the use of slave labor. Right now, this very moment, they are guilty of slave labor. Because they are, this is the one time in our country that you are presumed guilty until you prove yourself innocent. And I went over the processes, and if anyone wants to know, I can email it, I won't go over all that again, the different departments that they need to go through in order, in order to get that approval and that exemption from, um, uh, from, uh, the, I can't remember the name of the, uh, anyway, I'll remember, I probably have it in here, someone, as I go along.
Customs and Border-
Customs and, US, Customs and Border Protection, yes, thank you very much. Um, it also falls under the Holding Foreign Companies Accountable Act that was co-sponsored by Senators Kramer and Cotton, and what that does, it requires Fufang to go through an investigation by the United States. Now, my understanding is Fufang has presented you with some reference, and, and I could be incorrect on this, I, I'm just, you know, word of, word of mouth, that they have presented you with some letter of reference that says that they don't use slave labor. Whether or not that is true, I don't know, but I can tell you that that is invalid and that is illegal, and that cannot be used in this situation, because according to the development agreement as well, that Fufang must follow every federal law as well as any changed federal laws in order for the development agreement to continue. Um, and prior to this enacted law, thus far, Fufang has refused any US government investigation of any of their entities. And they do have the entities within that Xinjiang province where the slave labor issues seem to be very prevalent. Um, and, uh, yes, it not, the, the law, the federal law, requires them not only to open their books and look at their supply chains, it also requires them to open up to be able to take a look at their labor and see what their labor cost is, so that they can determine whether or not that this is an issue with the, with, with the use of slave labor. They are guilty, remember, they're guilty, right now, they are guilty. Um, and that this, anything you receive, receive prior to this date, the investigation, actually, this law is enacted, it was signed back in December, but it's actually enacted tomorrow, is when they are going to start investigation of these companies that are doing the imports, and if, and unless any of those companies have this exemption from the border protection, they will not be allowed to import their products into the United States. Um, Fufang USA does receive financial benefit from the use of slave labor. Um, and, and one thing that I would, would just like you to be aware of, because the one clinch that I thought you might, I mean, is there any questions on that at all that? Because the one clincher that I, I thought that might be thrown into this is that, that Fufang is a USA company, and we all know that it's not, we all know that it has one sole propriety ownership by Fufang Group, okay? So, the, the thing is to be aware of, and, and tariff imports, as far as the use of slave labor, have been on the books since 1930. And if you would like to know at this point, Fufang USA, um, in December of 2021, imported 125 metric tons of amino acids from that Xinjiang region in China. So they are guilty of the use of slave labor. And being that time is of the essence right now, I would ask you to put a motion on the table, that this project will be stopped, halted, terminated, whatever, until they are able to provide us with their exemption, because they are guilty right now. They are guilty, and we have said, if they are guilty, we will not allow them into our country. So they're guilty. So there needs to be something on the table, and I also do want to say that I did look up the development agreement, because I know a concern that you have all had, as you just mentioned a little bit earlier, is, well, how are we going to get our money back? There is, there is a clause within that development agreement that if Fufang does not go along with the federal laws, whether it be current, new, or changed, that it allows you to back out of the development agreement. So, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Mr. Kablik, are you ready to speak now?
I've been ready for weeks. You know, I don't want to come in here, I call this Monday night all night. This ain't what I want to do. I want to spend some time with my family, my dog, and my business. You people all got families. Mayor, I seen your family, you got a beautiful family. Sandy, you've got a nice wife. You know, why jeopardize your families with what you're doing here? And I'm not threatening you, but the truth of the matter is, if this thing continues, we're going to go and hold you people personally responsible for the money you're using of the cities. This thing has gone completely out of whack. You sat here and you took the abuse from Sandy that he's put us through. And Sandy, you know, you're going to wind up getting the abuse that you put us through before it's all done. We have to hire attorneys, I talked to over 50 attorneys before I found the one. Who set his office on fire? You know, let's not ask you guys, let's ask those guys from China. And you know, it's funny, Kevin and his buddies ain't here no more. What, aren't they interested in building, Mr. Sandy? Is that why they don't come to these meetings? Because they've given up on it? Using your thinking? You people really need to take a step back, because you know, every time you guys pull something, we have to hire another attorney. But now these attorneys are stepping up, people that I called at the beginning want to be part of this. People from all over the United States have gotten ahold of me, have come here on their own dollar. Nobody flew him in from Columbus, Ohio, he did it on his own dime. Just because you're looking for more money, but you won't have to, because you're not going to be there long. You know, if somebody would have known that they had to get somebody running against you a few months ago, they would have. And you know, if you guys don't want to answer questions, I will answer questions. You know, I found out you're from Blaine, Minnesota, Mr. Mayor. And you know, it's funny, Blaine, Minnesota was on that chart up there today. But I understand that from Blaine, Minnesota, you wound up teaching hockey to Russians. And I've also found out that you were brought into the state of North Dakota just for this Fufang project. This is why you told Sheila Spicer that you're not going to be here in two years. And you know, you said you were going to bring gas from the West? You knew two years ago that wasn't going to happen, you were told two years ago, and that's documented, that you were going to get no gas from the West, because since 2013, that gas has all been taken for Bitcoin. And if you don't think Bitcoin's going on, go look over at Dakota Power. There's four containers there going day and night. One of them caught on fire, and just about burned up the whole works. And you know, besides what that's sitting over at Dakota Power, is a structure for a power station. Now, is that Phase Two of Fufang? And Phase Three, I would guess is probably, uh, maybe a nuclear plant, because you don't have to treat water to Google or nuclear plant. And you know, it's funny, the people out West, that's the first thing they'd suggested when they seen that they wanted 6 million gallons a day, and yet, they don't have to treat it, because anything that's eaten by human beings has to be treated water. And so amino acids have to be treated water. You know, you people take a step back, you know, you're, you're, you're fighting the whole world, and don't you kid yourself? You know, there's some other people on your same agenda, and you guys are pushing the agenda, because I seen what happened, poor Ken here that day. You closed a meeting, he was, had his mind made up one direction, it was changed when we come back. You know, stop treating people like this, Sandy, I heard you at the first meeting I looked at, we got to treat each other better in this community, yes, we do. And, and the leaders of this community have to be better. Because you know, I'm ashamed that I'm from Grand Forks, North Dakota now. In all my life, I was proud of it. I traveled all over, I bragged that I was from Grand Forks, North Dakota. I don't do that anymore. When people ask me, I sheepishly say, "Yeah, I do." You know? You people really got to stop what you're doing here, because you're, you're destroying things. And if this went through, it would not only destroy Grand Forks, it would destroy the whole state. And you're going to see later on this month, there's a whole group of people coming along with news media, because they don't like what's happening here. And I really wish you people would consider your families, I really do. Because your families do not deserve what's going to happen when this thing really hits the fan. And I am serious, you know, you've got a beautiful family, Brandon. Nothing's worth having them go through what they're going to wind up going through, nothing's worth it. And Sandy, there's nothing worth putting your wife through, and she's going to go through by the time this thing is over. Because it's not over until I'm happy, because I don't get even, I get ahead. And I tell you right now, I'm not the richest man in the world, but I've had a lot of them coming up behind me and asking how much money I need. How much money does the attorney want? And you know, every time you guys pull something, there's another attorney filing different papers. And you know, it's really a shame that we have to take our courts and screw them up with things like this that don't even belong here. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. You know, as I was sitting here earlier tonight, I had a list of things I wanted to ask, and then I started changing my thinking of, completely different. We, as a city, and you as a city council, the dis, distance between you and the people is a lot greater than what we see right now. And, and I listened to on the radio, this division, you know, you listen to it, for Fufang, against Fufang, all of this, and people really are taking it outside the realm of, of this situation. And that bothers me, because Grand Forks, Grand Forks County, the state of North Dakota, have some of the greatest minds, the greatest talents, the greatest people that you ever wanted to talk and work with. Um, that's why I retired here, is because of the people here, because of the, uh, the land, and I really do love our flag and our state. And I really do love our flag and our state. And I listened even tonight with Jody and Dennis as they're talking, and a lot of good stuff from both sides. And one of the things that I noticed is, this side, hey, we're saying, we're answering the questions. And this side is saying, you're not answering our questions. You know what they call that? A disconnect. How do we fix this disconnect? Because we are disconnected right now. I think, since I've been here since 1990, I never seen such division here in Grand Forks than any other time, any other time. I mean, the Larry Center, we used to talk about the park, but not, not like this here. So, as I was thinking, what would you do? We need to do some healing. We need to work together. When people work together, there's nothing people can't accomplish, especially in American know-how. We're, we're second to none when it comes to solving problems, dealing with any type of situation. Look at our history from different wars, different disasters. We're second to none when it comes to that. We could put our minds together and come up with all types of solution. But here, we don't have a solution. It's us against them. The McCoys against the Hatfields. That's not the way this needs to be. Tonight is one of those where you could draw a line and say, hey, look, we can either be a good example, or we could be a good example of a bad example. It's going to have to come from both ways, more so on your side. So, how do we fix this? One of the things I believe that would help a lot is to answer questions. You say, we answer questions. Well, if you believe the questions were asked, and they believe the asked questions were asked, but no one has come to a conclusion that they were answered, then we're out of impasse. My solution, like I tell individuals when I'm in a meeting, just don't come out and say, hey, look, just don't tell me this won't work. Give me two reasons why it don't work. Because when you give one reason why it don't work, it's personal. When you give two, you start using creative juices. So, one of the solutions I would suggest, as far as, how can we, the people and the city council, come together, work together, to fix the problem that we're having? Because this is not the only one. Fufang is not going to be the only, only problem that we're going to have. You're going to have companies next year, year after, different city councils, all these different things. But how do you answer and have the people work together, and the people know that we got a city council that we elected, that is listening to us? As I was sitting over there, one of the things is the PowerPoint presentation. Take the people's questions, go back over the minutes and everything, if we have minutes, or the videos, listen to the questions, the ones that were emailed. Put them up there. This is what's sent from Mike Coachman, this questions. Don't matter if it's a good question, bad question, or ugly, if you have to answer. Answer, be honest with it. People could deal with honesty, and I know that's what we're all looking for, an honest one, even if it hurts. Even if it's not going to favor your side or your stance, but answer the question. People will say, hey, look, I don't like your answer, but what if you do this? What if you do this here, maybe this would work? Not only that, when people go back and they say, they never answer a question, you can say, well, and this question was answered on the 27th of June, and it was slide number 15, and that's where the question was. And this is how they answered. If you do a PowerPoint presentation with all the questions people have, ranging from petitions to security, to whatever the questions may be, put them up there. Make it a one night where people had questions and they were answered. And if we have to do a follow-up, then do a follow-up. What it does is, knowing that you're listening, and also knowing that they're being heard. And some of the things that you're dealing with, they can give you solutions for, because why? Because now, they're being heard. No one doesn't like to be heard. It's one thing to be a little kid and told, go to your room, and they ask, why? Because I said so. But these are not little kids. These are adults that are parents, grandparents. They're not 30, 40, they're in their 50s, 60s, and 70s. And we want to be talked to. Talking for some of you there. As such. Just as you like to be respected, sitting up there, we like to be respected, sitting out here. So, answer us on an adult level. How to do that is to sit down and answer the questions. Is it going to be easy? No, it's not going to be easy. Will it be right? I believe it would be right. Because you're trying to move forward with a whole bunch of ankle weights, or an anchor, and you're not going to go very far. And the city is not going to go very far, because you're not going to have the people. They said, if you're out leading, you believe the people, and you turn around, and there's no one behind you, you're not leading, you're just out for a walk. And I believe, as leaders, you want to turn around and see the people behind you. And it doesn't matter who you are, Danny, I know, Mr. Sanders, that you would say, I believe I'm leading, who's following? I like to follow you. But I need my questions answered. I like to know that you're listening to me when I'm talking, and give me an answer, not just a pat on the head and say, okay, go this way. No. I believe every person here wants to follow you, each and every one of you. But they want to know the right answer, not just an answer and say, hey, look, I answered you. That's not what we need. We want to support you. These people here, and other ones have been here, are here because they want you as leaders. But they want you to be a leader that is listening to us, our opinions, and come together as a solution to whatever the problem may be. So, the choice is, come down and sit with the people and talk with them? And like you would said, not many meetings were in words? Or have the people come up with you and support you? Either way, you're going to, it's a win-win scenario. But if you keep the distance, no one wins. No one wins. Why? Because we know that other companies are looking at Grand Forks, and they do not want to come here if there's going to be that much division. People are not going to come here as we, the people, if you're not going to listen to them. People are not going to come here if the Constitution is thrown out the window. No one's going to come to any place if they're not going to be heard. Don't matter how good you may have a business. You ever thought about why we so understaffed of people and businesses? Think. If people can't hire people now, why? If Grand Forks is such a great place, why is no one coming? You ever thought, because there's a disconnect? I'm standing up here to let you know, I'm not angry with you. I'm not angry with anybody out here. I'm going to come up with solutions so we can have a better place. That Grand Forks will rock the world, as far as industry and people and love and working together. That's what I want to see. I want to see where you can approach somebody and talk to them, say, you know what? I like what you're saying. Let's go ahead and put it down. And run with it. I may not have the expertise, but what can we, what can you do to help make this happen? Your greatest resource, I don't care if it's in a company or the military, is what? People. If you don't have people behind you, you don't have a great resource. And the people want to be your great resource. Utilize them. But you got to listen to them. And I know enough people who have been in the military, know, if we don't have a boss that's like a squadron commander, base commander, you know what? We do nothing, we flunk a couple IGs, he's gone. We're still here. He's gone. Until we get a commander, and some of the greatest commanders, especially when I was in Germany, the greatest commanders from squadron wing to base, they listen to the people. They come down and say, hey, Eminem so-and-so, what do you think? Ah, if we could add an ice machine, that'd be great. Or an ice cream machine, or this. They got it. And you tell you what, those people performed like you've never seen before. Because why? Because leadership took time to listen to them and met their needs. Let's remove the golf fix between the people. And it takes a good leader to do that. And I'm asking each one of you as leaders to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coachman. I think that was much better than the first meeting when you were going to arrest everybody, so.
If, if I may have just 10 seconds, because I just do want to say that can, that I'm all for growth. There's so many in the community, and I know Keith Lund, I don't know if he's here, but had brought up that there were a lot of other projects that were, you know, in the works that you guys have received RFPs for. We support you in that way 100%. I do want to say, though, that continuing on with this project beyond tonight is against federal law on your part to, to move on with that. And I would say, I, to put a motion on the table, to put it on hold, put it in Fufang's hands, to get that exemption, and, and leave it up to them to be able to move forward or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Moving on to seven, approval of minutes and bills?
Vendor list.
Mayor. Mr. Cather, go upstairs.
Sure, step on up. If you just state your name and your address. Oh, base historian, sir, thank you for coming here tonight.
You're welcome. I'm surprised you actually recognize me. We've never actually officially met or talked, so.
Oh, thank you for coming. What, sorry, address and name?
So, name is Jason Patrick, and my address is 1209 Oak Street. I kind of want a caveat off what my fellow veteran over there said. All right. When I was leading troops.
That's Coachman, not me.
I think we figured that one out, thanks. No offense. I was pointing in a vague direction. When I was leading troops and shots in Iraq and Afghanistan, when I came here to take the wing historian position, and by the way, so we're absolutely clear, I'm here of my own volition, and I'm not representing the base in any way. So, you know, in case somebody wants to pull that legal card out of their pocket, no hatchback stuff going on here. Okay? I never thought I'd have to be sitting here, listening to these things, and talking to people on a city council about the issues that we're seeing, so much of what he's talking about. I don't know if you guys are readers. Maybe you are, maybe you aren't, I don't know. I would hope the lawyer at least would be. I strongly encourage you to take a look at, regarding this Fufang issue, take a look at SecDef's reading list. Take a look at SecDef's reading list, okay? Take a look at military high-level leadership, command level and higher, reading lists for their personnel. And you're going to find some very eye-opening stuff on there. Very eye-opening. Might not sleep at night for a week eye-opening. Okay? And then the other thing is, is during those times when I was leading troops in the field, running shops in the field, there was something that I was reminded of constantly, and I don't see a lot of it here. Leaders eat last. It's the title of a book. It's actually on some commander's reading lists. I highly recommend, being on a council, you pick up that book, and you read it. Leadership is servitude to your subordinates. You facilitate, you equip, you show them the right way morally, ethically, and operationally. You guys need to take a look at that stuff. And when you start talking about what are we going to do about rising issues with inflation and costs, and how are we going to pay people? Last time I checked, every voting council member up here, they're paid for this position, right? But it's not your primary, it's not your sole income. Leaders eat last, right? Where can you sacrifice to make sure your people have what they need? Leadership isn't about getting to the top, it's not about power, it's about empowering. All right? Leadership, integrity, honor, duty, all of these things. Watchwords of people like myself, Mr. Carmichael. Take these to heart. Watch how you say things. Watch how you allow things to be said. Integrity, guys. Integrity in leadership. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. On to six, approval of minutes and bills?
7.1 is the vendor list as presented.
Got a motion to approve. Got a motion from President Sandy, second from Mr. Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Vendor list is approved.
And 7.2 are the minutes from March 7th and March 21st.
As is, we got a motion and a second from, a motion from President Sandy, second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. The minutes are approved. Moving on to eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Field, any comments this evening?
Just a few, Mayor, thank you. Mayor Bocinski, members of the city council. Congratulations to Mr. Sandy and also to Ms. Osowski, Ms. Lunskey. We are planning with the two new members that we will provide some sessions to get them around to the various city departments as they become appointed next week, so we will plan that. So, if any one of you also would like to take some tours and all the things that we're going to help choreograph, you're certainly welcome to do that. So, we will not only do it with the two new members that are going to come, that we're excited to see, but for all of you that may not have seen all the various departments and all the things that we do day-to-day, so we will do that. Number two, there's been two requests, Council President Sandy is to have updates for next week's community of the whole. One is a public art commission update. As you recall, last year, you set aside some funding for some programming. And so, I'm, I'm working with them along with other administrative staff. So, we're going to provide you a PAC update next week, Monday, and then also, Council Member Dockler, for one of her last things is to get a rental program update. I've asked Mr. Base to provide an update on that. And I, I know, Mr. Weber, you asked also for the PAC update along with Council Member Dockler. So, we'll plan to do that, if we can bring things together on Monday, so that you get an update moving into the new city council and that sort of thing. Also, want to give you an update, you have a lot of meetings coming up here in July, and, and even though the weather is nice in the summer, we have a lot more meetings in the summer. So, we do really appreciate your servant leadership, to your positions, and dedicating your time and attention during June, July, and August, and into September, when we are heavy with meetings. So, you have one more meeting on Monday, July 11th. It is a community of the whole meeting night, and then 6:00 or 6:30, we're going to have a joint city council meeting with your colleagues over in East Grand Forks regarding the bridge matters. And so, I've asked the MPO to help organize that, and certainly that is their function. There's a new executive director in Ms. Hallford, and we want to get off on the right step and, and start moving that forward. So, I, hopefully, we can not only discuss the intercity bridge, that's inside the city, the neighborhood bridge, so-called, or the Maryville Bridge. So, hopefully, I have a briefing on that on, on the, on the July 11th meeting, after the community of the whole. And then, also in July, it was discussed about the development agreement. And again, I think, listening to the people of what they've wanted, I don't think anyone's come up here and asked any questions regarding, that's not in the development agreement. And I think that was recited here this evening, that every issue that has come up. And I think that was recited here this evening, that every issue that has come up, whether it's a specific issue regarding environmental, infrastructure, what have you, or if it's just a general, federal, state, local, it's all contained in the development agreement. And so as we work through these various issues, we are gonna have some, within that development agreement, we're gonna bring first out, Mr. Gossett has led, there's been a lot of discussion about the CFS review, which is that foreign investment. We have procured a law firm to provide us a letter of opinion, so we anticipate that being completed in and around the end of June, and that would be presented to city council in July. We also intend to continue to move forward with the construction manager address process, which, you know, more centers on the wastewater treatment plant, but of course, it's mainly for all of us, those improvements, but it's also related to Foo-Fang. So that's gonna be coming through. There are gonna be three memos that we're gonna bring forward on three areas that are contained within the development agreement. One is traffic, the other one is wastewater pretreatment, and then finally, the plume analysis. So those will all come through in July, where we'll have some more specific final studies, recommendations, and ways forward, so that's all contained within the development agreement, again. Finally, we had some discussions on the city employees, and so we're all proud to work for the city of Grand Forks and serve the citizens of Grand Forks. And so nobody's ashamed to do that in the city of Grand Forks. So when we meet with employees that work in the city of Grand Forks and with Mayor Bochensky, we really are proud. Has the Foo-Fang matter been challenging? It's been challenging on everybody within the city of Grand Forks, and that's what we have to remember, so that we have many other jobs, many other things we do, and this is layered upon on this. And so as the previous speaker has lectured us on leadership and those sorts of things, I think we have stood here every Monday evening. Our employees have dedicated themselves to the citizens of Grand Forks, and that's what you hear down the line. And so they will also look forward for a picnic here in July with the city employees, and whatever you can do to be there and help serve. As was noted, the city employees would really appreciate that. So more information coming on that city picnic that's, you know, led by the city employees, but they certainly would love to have you there and also help serve and have some comradeship with them. So with that, I'm very thankful for all that you do, and just so you know, the rank and file of the city of Grand Forks appreciates all you can do. They understand the pressures that we're under, but look at all the great things about Grand Forks, and when Marie presented some of the financial analysis, think of where we're at coming out of this pandemic compared to where we thought. We should be very proud of where we are, and as to be your city administrator on behalf of the city of Grand Forks, I'm very proud. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Move on to Mayor and Councilmember comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments this evening, sir?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Dockler, any comments?
No. No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Weber.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Just briefly. I have tried to hold ward meetings in the past. They've not been well-attended. But I attend many, many community and neighborhood meetings. Generally, they're focused on some specific issue. I remember a series of meetings about a new business that was being proposed in the near-north neighborhood. There were a handful of residents showed up time and time again. They had concerns about traffic. They had concerns about water pollution. They had concerns about odors, and they had concerns about noise. They told me repeatedly that I had a responsibility to serve the people, and it's difficult to know, because I have a responsibility to serve all of Grand Forks and specifically Ward Three, but it isn't always the voices that shout the loudest that are the most representative. Ultimately, this business that conformed to the laws of the community, the city, it opened, and today, there's a fantastically successful, profitable, doggy daycare business. And I've never once received a single complaint about that business. And so that, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Was Mr. Kavami, did he come in? He's not here, okay. Mr. Veen.
Just very briefly, Mr. Phelan, I appreciate the comments that you made tonight, especially on the upcoming meetings that are coming on. The MPO and the meeting on the bridge is, I think, getting the communities together and have that discussion is going to be very beneficial and helpful as we try to figure out how to move forward. I do invite everybody, I'm on the Laris Commission also, to take part in that meeting. I know we're a few weeks away, and that's good, too. I'm also encouraged by the response you had, talked about some of the development agreements, especially those on infrastructure, where you talked about the streets, the wastewater and stormwater. I think I would like to make sure that we get plenty of opportunity to understand what those studies mean. We asked about those back in probably February, and it's nice to see that they're coming forward. I would add that we do need to talk more about wastewater, and wastewater, stormwater, I meant to say, and raw water. And so some of those things, I'll continue to work with you, and we need to talk a little bit more about availability again of raw water, because I think that's gonna be an issue as we talk about all these plants for the future. So I look forward to those discussions and having them in July. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Vice President Mock, it'll be the last time I get to say that, unless you're, of course, the vice president of the country later, but for now.
Well, I have another meeting left, two meetings.
Yeah, that's true. Well, all right. Getting down there, please.
No, I don't have anything. I'll save it for those.
Sounds good. President Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly want to thank Ms. Mock as well as Ms. Dockler for their service to our community. They both have performed exemplary, standing up for things that they believe in, often at times when others didn't, and showing the courage and conviction to do so, something that I think all of us council members have to do occasionally, because sometimes you can't please everyone. So I really very much appreciate it, and I very much appreciate it, working with both of them on many separate issues. Mr. Mayor, that's enough for tonight.
All right, thank you. My comments, again, just thank everyone for being here. Thank you for giving us things to think about. Thank you for sitting through this and even a little bit warmer than it usually is with the HVAC system acting up, but I appreciate that. Appreciate all that staff does. We're doing the best we can to take care of our employees, and I hopefully, hopefully they're seeing that resonate as we go through the budget process. So thank you, everybody. And with that, we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn, if anyone's willing.
I'll move.
Okay. Vice President Mock has motioned, Mr. Weber, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.